I've got to talk to Orlando. I haven't been down there. He called Carol.
He called Carol?
Yes, Carol. He called, but I think I told that. It's a month ago. Yeah. I've got people in town. I've got people in town. We're here to help. He said that's our little freestyle. What is it? He said, "Hi." Or, "Yes." I don't think I mean anything wrong. I don't think he said that. Yeah. I have several things I need to go through. I have several things I need to go through. I have several things I need to go through. I don't mind being there on these kinds of calls. But you do it right. Yeah. I have several things I need to go through. I have several things I need to go through. I have several things I need to go through. I have several things I need to go through. I have several things I need to go through. I have several things I need to go through. I have several things I need to go through. I have several things I need to go through. Where is he going? He said that's our little freestyle. What is it? He said, "Hi." Or, "Yes." I have to tell him. I don't say, "I mean, I'm gonna be wrong." But I don't think he said that. Yeah. I think I swear away sometimes. I don't mind being there on these kinds of calls. But you do it right. Yeah. I have several things I need to go through. I have several things I need to go through. I have several things I need to go through. I have several things I need to go through. I have several things I need to go through. I have several things I need to go through. I have several things I need to go through. Um, so, I don't know. So, we have to do this. I don't, we don't say anything to each other. I would say, "It's fifteen years." So, anyhow, I've got my stuff for a long business. So, we have a stuff to go around. I have like thirty six. I have plenty of time. 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 Hey, how are you doing? Hope y'all enjoyed it. I think I'm feeling good. 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 I said, "George." Of course, I said, "George." I think I was, "George." I think I was, "George." I heard, "George." I did, "How many people?" So, I think, "Hey." I don't, you know, I don't know. I work a lot of this. I work a lot of this. I feel, you know, I feel, you know, I feel. I mean, I'm not gonna say it. I mean, I have it in me. 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 I mean, I'm not gonna say it. I mean, I have it in me. I have it in me. I have it in me. I think it's, "Yeah." It's, "Yes." It's, "Yes." Yeah. And now, now, it's, "Yeah." It's, "Yeah." I want to talk to them. Yeah, right. Yeah. I want you all to, um, like, you know. Yeah. Well, 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 well. They work. They work, they work. They're not over hearts. They always have those, that, that, that.
Occasionally, you're surprised, and occasionally you walk in and find somebody who actually wants to do their job. But that's what we struggle with every day to make sure that when people come here to Milton, every experience they can leave and say, "That was easy," or[12.34][12.34]"That was a better experience than I expected." And gosh, it really wasn't as hard to deal with the bureaucracy of what this big thing known as government is. So, having said that, this strategy is to provide the responsible and responsive government. And the strategy definition, "Provide quality services through professional staff in a fiscally responsible environment while maximizing resources." It's a real great way to say, "Gosh, we want to provide..." What we do, we want to do well. What we do, we want to be fiscally responsible. And what we do, we want to maximize the resources that we have at our disposal. There's a lot of different bullets. This was one that seemed to be consistent in the buckets, when we were creating buckets as to what strategy should be. But I think that generally, the staff members that are part of this group, as well as the citizen representatives that are part of this group, feel as though this is a strategy by which Milton, number one, can be successful, number two, can be a lot different than a lot of other governments. So, that's strategy number three.
Moving on. Promoting the equestrian lifestyle, strategy number four. I think the group really had some... Well, I know we had quite a few discussions about, you know, who is our equestrian community? What really they look like? They are one of our key stakeholders. We're interested in them. And we couldn't come up with a really perfect definition. You know, there's not really a quantitative way necessarily to get out who our equestrian folks are. And so, we really felt like it was an equestrian culture more than anything else. And that shows up in our strategy definition, supporting both the equestrian culture and community through preservation and promotion. And so, we talk about things like establishing infrastructure specifically for the equestrian community, things that are equestrian-friendly, increase some awareness of our other citizens to the opportunities provided by our equestrian community, creating a specific equestrian trail plan, promoting those events that are equestrian-related and potentially co-sponsored by the city, and then reducing some fees for equestrian licensing and other items that are equestrian-related.
The final strategy was one that is titled, "Structuring Economic Growth." The definition was to create a climate for success. And this really took, you know, a couple of different directions it could go. And it's kind of in a place right now that the notion behind it is that we welcome good growth, that we welcome growth that will enhance Milton. We want growth in business to thrive here in places that it adds to the fabric of the community. And to be able to structure that so that Milton and the business owners and the people who want to do business here are successful should be one of the strategies that we look at. So, I could highlight a couple of these things. You know, plan for welcome growth, help promote Milton businesses to Milton residents, create opportunities for entrepreneurs, promote the city for business and real estate opportunities where those make sense. Obviously, implement Transportation Master Plan on schedule to keep our infrastructure strong. That is kind of what comes out of that fifth strategy. Now, the thing is that we don't... We could have 142 strategies and be successful at none of them. The key... We had more than these five, but we struggled and made ourselves get back to a manageable number, especially because we're looking at a three-year plan that these will be easy to monitor so that we can actually put some performance measures to them, which would be, is the next step that we're working towards, and then be able to determine whether or not we have success or not. Again, the team has worked well together. The facilitators have facilitated well. Thank you to our citizen participants on this committee, Rita Young, Jack Flowers, Mike McAlpin, and Carrie Schwimmer, the four citizen participants on the committee. Communities made good progress. The last meeting, Principal Jones hosted for us at Milton High School, which was nice to get out of the building and into a different environment, give a little bit of the planning. Having said that, I guess I now open it up for discussion if there is any. Maybe we are on the right track. Maybe we need to change the direction. Let me hear that from you all.
And I guess I'd say too, if anybody had any questions, Frank and Allison probably wouldn't mind answering either. So, they're here. Do you have any questions? Julie?
I don't know if it's a question as much as just a few thoughts. Having just heard the presentation from Lou Oliver and looking at this and going through it, it would seem to me that there would be a disconnect if we don't have Lou as a part of the strategic process, given that so many of these items tie directly into what we're about to do with regards to Crab Apple, but also transfer development rights, conservation. Because it's one thing to talk about it, it's another to make sure that the expert that we've brought to the table for Crab Apple, which may have influences on Arnold Mill and Highway Nine, that they're a part of that process. So, I just would hope that we could engage him sooner, not later. And it may not be now. That's the right time to talk about just other things. I mean, when you talk about protect and preserve open space, you know, obviously, there's some conservation trusts that are out there that some of the relationships we need to build would also hopefully include conservation trust organizations that are out there that are already pursuing easements, et cetera, as well as companies like GTC that have electric lines that run throughout our community, where we have an opportunity to partner with those organizations to enhance some things for probably a pretty low cost. So, those may be more details, but not knowing when it's going to go from high level to the next step, as long as we're going through it, may as well go ahead and throw out the
Sure. And you're right. The notes that is identified. We're going to tighten this thing on down. I guess what we're looking at this point is, is protect and preserve green space a decent strategy? And, you know, obviously, there'll be stuff that's built underneath that. So...
Right.
Yeah. Comments are very welcome.
And these are some, obviously, large ideas that we've been talking about. So, I would suspect that you're probably at the point where you want to start getting more detail-oriented. And so, the answer, Chris, to your point would be, yes, I think globally, those are the right ideas. My hope would be just we have that opportunity to start providing more specific input. Because, you know, some of the folks that are engaged may or may not be the person that has some of those details. So, just making sure before it gets too much further down, that either we route that directly to you guys, or we route it through, you know, Jack or others that are participating, and obviously, our staff. One thing that comes to mind, and Cindy, you're here. When we think about our horse community, I'd love to see us have a part... And we may already be pursuing it, but so we can have some horse camps that we have as part of our rep program. And I know we're looking for active, like, and I'm looking because I can't see Jack beyond the microphone. But I really think we've got an opportunity right now. You know, I know we're doing soccer and baseball, but I think it's a missed opportunity if we don't reach out and provide some summer horse programs. And it's only March, and I think we could do some horse programs this summer. And I'd like to go. So, if you get a program, I'd love to participate. I'm just a big kid. But I know that we would have folks that would want to engage in that. And that would include not only all ages, but also students and children of disabilities that we could reach out to. And that would also expand. We've got the facilities. It'd be a great way to promote our equestrian community now. So, anyway, final question, because those weren't questions, those were just comments. Under create a climate for success, where it says, "Develop nodes of opportunity," does that mean commercial nodes beyond our comprehensive plan, or are those just meaning the nodes that we've already identified as part of the master plan?
That was a item that was put up on a post-it note. And I'm glad you asked the question. If I recall right, it was Carter that wrote that post-it note.
So, is that a node of opportunity as in the esoteric node, or specifically commercial node?
I guess it was a general comment. We had talked quite a bit about developing the small-town, kind of rural, character. And how do we do that around maybe the Highway Nine area, the Birmingham area, the Crab Apple area? And the comment was more towards, maybe there's an opportunity to look at all three of those areas and the unique characteristics that are in those zones and develop them as they are. Don't look for one particular Milton. Develop Milton as it's already been developed in some of those particular areas. So, it was really more of a comment of, let's recognize that there are these different areas out there, and how can we capitalize on those types of opportunities?
So, try not to make Highway Nine look like Birmingham, or Birmingham look like Highway Nine, but realize they both have their distinct...
That's right.
...character. And it's both important to the city as a whole.
And as we saw in some of the photographs, some of what has started to evolve in some areas is perhaps not where we want to head, so we may have an opportunity to retrofit. I just wanted... I wasn't sure if I was understanding that those would be new nodes, or if those were just leveraging what's there. So, it sounds like just leveraging what it is today.
Right.
Bill?
I want to commend Frank and Allison for leading this group in the committee that came up with these five strategies here. I understand the process that we went through. But number three here, "Provide responsible and responsive government," I think embodies everything else that we're talking about here. And it's the true essence of what this is all about. It's not only providing service at the permit counter and police and fire responses. It's from us here at council. And what it amounts to is listening to the community, find out what they want, and then taking the leadership to make all of this happen. And I think we're on the right track here. I'd like to see you move forward on this. I think we could really refine it and come up with a good working tool.
Karen?
What exactly is the procedure going forward now? Where does this go from here? When does it come back to the council? When does it... I guess my question is, when does it become a policy-type thing that the council really needs to handle? When does it come to the more details that is handled by this committee? Because it seems like to me that the mission would be more of a policy-type thing, that really ought to be more of a council-type thing, where all the rest of this is more details that ought to be handled by the group.
All right. Well, I guess at the next step, this will... There's two more opportunities during this process that we come back to the council at a minimum, maybe more. And, you know, I guess I could defer to when Frank or Allison might find that the right time for the council to weigh in on the mission is. You know, we've had that debate amongst the group as to whose job is that, whose job is the vision, whose job is the mission. I think we've got at least what was recalled in the notes of the council retreat was that this group would have the ability to validate, or should look at validating both the vision and the mission. And I can tell you that where it is at this point, these missions probably are going to need some work to be able to have this whole thing, to be able to work off each other. And I would say that, gosh, probably in the next 30 to 60, maybe 90 days, this gets to the point where it really becomes the decision of policy for a while. We'll be back in 30 days. We'll be back in 60 days. I don't know if that'll be the end. It might be 90 days.
Okay. Anybody else?
I guess mine, I got just a quick observation. And it's nothing more than an observation. I don't know what it means, if it means nothing at all. But, you know, with the original council vision, you know, the embracing of small-town life and heritage, preserving and enhancing our rural character. It's interesting to see that the two things, and I know all of these strategies fit into them, but protect and preserve open space and promote the equestrian lifestyle only each have five action items under them. And every other ones have, you know, a lot of them. Again, I don't know what that means, if that means anything. Maybe those are simpler things that you can kind of capture in real life versus, you know, more different... You know, I don't know. But just an observation.
Actually, there were probably, although it condenses down to about five, there were probably 15 or 20 for each one of those. But as we started to condense and kind of push through the filter, how much of these are really substantially different, we boiled them down to about five, because there were a whole lot of us who felt like we needed to do these things.
Yeah.
So, I think that, you know, the support is there. I think that it's good that the group recognizes that those are items that need to be done to kind of fill that gap between what we're doing now and what will actually reach that mission or vision statement. But yeah, there were quite a few stickies.
Well, I think it's good that you can boil... I mean, if you've got five things, you can concentrate on five things a lot better than you can 25.
Yes, sir.
One more thing, Mayor.
Sure, Karen.
Under the equestrian, I would really like us to look at, what are the reasons that we would be losing part of the equestrian community? What are the reasons that they actually leave Milton? And see what are those reasons we can address to try to keep them within the city. And I'm sure some of them can tell us what the reasons are, you know. And I know part of it probably is land value, but I'm sure that there are other reasons too, that what we can do to make them want to stay within the city of Milton.
Good point.
Karen, Chris, just to understand the process here, because I'm real glad to see the city going through all this. I think it's a great exercise. Having participated on the front end of this, I think, was very helpful. I mean, but the goal here is to come up with a set of strategies that we want to execute on. It's not to define the tactics behind how to make those things come about, or that's where we're going with this. Okay. So, there's going to be a lot more opportunity for input into the details, engagement of the citizens, to help us understand what those things are. So, there's a lot left to this whole thing.
This is the first... I mean, this is the first time we've been in front of y'all to do an upload. So, Frank, do you have any... Do you want to add anything on the timeline?
Yes. And actually, you ask very good questions, and it shows that you're paying attention, and you're getting the concepts. Probably the next time we get together with the team, we're going to take a look at the items that you saw listed as the strategic action items. We're going to go through those with a fine tin cone, look to see if we've missed anything, and thank you for some of your input. And also, we're going to look at two prioritization, and then take a look at what can be done realistically in a year one, a year two, and a year three. And then, we start to look at dollar figures. And then, to some of your points, some of the folks that had been presenting earlier, we will look to see if there's any subject matter, experts whose input we can bring into the planning process. Because one of the things we don't want to do is build a plan in a vacuum.
Okay. Anybody... Anyone else have a question for Chris, or Frank, or Allison?
Mr. Quinlan. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, guys. Okay. I'll let the city clerk call the next item.
Next item is discussion of proposed text amendments, RZ 1006, "To amend the City of Milton zoning ordinance, section 64-1820, landscaping business plant nursery or garden center with indoor retail component," and RZ 1008, "To amend the City of Milton zoning ordinance, section 64-1, definition for landscaping business." This item was previously discussed at special called work session on December 20th, 2010. Ms. Lynn Tully.
As I expect you all remember very vividly, we did have a lot of discussion regarding whether or not to continue to include landscape businesses in the AG1 zoning district as a special use permit. When we went through this, there was concern to the point that you all wanted to send this back to the planning commission to get some additional input on specific questions. We have provided you a list of the, I think it's 11 questions, as we copied them down, that we brought back to the planning commission. I'll go through those questions kind of with a response from the planning commission. They did hear this. They did bring you back a recommendation. Let me go through the questions and answers first, and then I'll prepare... I'll present you the recommendation as well as the final edits. So, the first one is comparison to other neighboring jurisdictions and how they handle landscaping businesses. And again, we had originally, when staff had presented this to planning commission, we had looked at some other areas, including areas that were outside of Georgia. That included Lexington, Fayette County, Kentucky. We looked at Chattahoochee Hills within Georgia. We looked in our adjoining cities. And as we found, those that were further out, a little more rural, permitted landscape businesses in AG1, those that were adjoining us, particularly to the south, Roswell and Alpharetta, they don't even have an AG1 district, and therefore, they don't allow them in AG1, but allow them in C1. Should we consider this as an AG1 use? And I have to tell you that the planning commission really very vigorously debated this issue. But as it came down, they did agree that the landscape businesses should remain in AG1 originally. The planning commission did originally feel like the city council, and still feel like the city council, can use some discretion based on the amended use permit and whether to approve a landscape business, and what potentially, what other conditions to add in addition to those specifications that are required for the special use permit. And number three, did the recommended definition expand? Well, the planning commission did state that the definition was clarified, not necessarily expanded. And I think that was more to help staff and enforcement than anything else. Number four, whether we should be more specific on development standards or leave some room for interpretation to the individual proposal by the council. Planning commission was satisfied with the development standards in the use permit, and of course, you are always at your discretion to add additional conditions. Number five, clarify how to limit storage of materials, specifically height and enclosure, including an overhead cover of materials. Again, the planning commission said that based on the specific conditions of the request, additional requirements could be placed on the applicant at the discretion of the council. Number six, to define or reference a more specific identification of access roads, maybe an adopted map or listing of specific roadways. The planning commission also identified that there's a need for a map to depict the categories or classification of roads. We had some question as to which map showing collector roads was the correct map to use. And we'll have to, as staff, put that together independently. And I think, again, we've got enough background with our public works director and our planning department to put that together. We've got several different versions, so we just need to kind of settle on one. Where was I? Number seven, to limit the types of equipment, i.e. a commercial dumpster, for instance. The planning commission did state that the equipment does need to be garaged or screened, but they didn't want to be any more specific, and to allow the city council to have discretion to provide additional conditions if they feel like those would be necessary based on the application. Number eight, screening versus buffering of parking and storage areas, particularly accounting for topographic changes. The conditions provided would help with screening and buffering. There are some issues, some particularly topographic, that can't necessarily be helped. For instance, if you're on a hill, you're going to look down on this use. You're going to continue to look down on it unless somebody, you know, drastically changes things. So, we don't expect that there will be a lot of screening that would be added, but potentially, like you said, depending on the application and the intensity of that request, you could add additional screening and covers if necessary. Number nine, hours of operation consistent with the noise ordinance. We did have a lengthy discussion regarding the noise ordinance and those requirements, and how it would affect this use permit. The noise ordinance should address, it's believed that it should address any issues regarding existing language for hours of operation, which are 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and vendor material deliveries at 7:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. So... Number 10, to address the number of commercial vehicles and whether they should be garaged or screened. Planning commission felt like that not limiting the number of commercial vehicles based on... Well, the limitation would be the number versus screening, garaging or screening the additional equipment. These particularly were in reference to employee vehicles. Number 11, consider whether the definition allows for or even requires that the business owner reside on the property. The definition, as it stands, does allow for residents on the property, but it doesn't require that. So, they could have it on the same place as where they lived, have run the business on the same place as their home. So, in light of all that, the planning commission did have a recommendation. It's unusual for them to have this type of recommendation, but they really struggled with this as well. The recommendation was to approve the planning commission amendments to the use permit for landscape business with some changes recommended by the city attorney, and to explain to the city council the planning commission's reasoning for the amendments, which I just did, or to delete landscaping businesses from AG1 district completely and allow it only in C1. And so, that was their recommendation. And like I said, as you can tell, they struggled with this. It was difficult as well. So, here we are. With the definition to do either of those two things, or with the recommendation to do either of those two things. You could also choose to do nothing, leave the ordinance as it stands. This was something that did come up over a year ago from, I think it originated with the planning commission. Is that correct, Robin? Almost two years ago now. It originated with the planning commission from issues that they had seen during rezoning requests. So... What can I answer as questions?
I've got one question.
Karen?
A landscape business, as I read it here, doesn't mean some of these businesses, I know we have several of them in Milton, that grow their own plants and sell them in wholesale or retail of what they have grown on-site. Is that correct?
There is an allowance for... In the definition itself, it says that they may be approved for equipment storage, parking, material storage, and a building or buildings for storage and plant propagation. So, it's potential, potentially allowable for them to have, for instance, greenhouses to grow annuals.
But I mean, like Birmingham Highway, there's several that have been there 40, 50 years that grow all kinds of plants. They're really part of what rural character is all about, is these places that grow the plants. Do they fall under this landscaping business? Because I mean, that's...
They wouldn't necessarily. If their business was singularly the nursery portion...
Yeah. I mean, they're really nurseries. I mean, that's what they, you know.
But they could be if they chose to include this as a part of their service.
Okay. But as long as they're just selling the stuff that they're growing on-site, then they're not really part of this.
Good, Joe?
Yeah. So, let's pretend for just a second, I own some AG1 property back somewhere in Milton. I've been operating a landscape business for 10 years, okay, before the formation of Milton. I go to sleep one night, I wake up the next day, all of a sudden, there's a problem with me doing what I've been doing for the past 10 years. Is there a grandfather clause in here that controls established businesses, businesses that have been doing this for some time? What's the deal there?
There won't be. There won't be an express, or I'm not aware of an express grandfather clause being put into this language. That's not necessary. The law is the grandfather clause, and it anticipates that if your business is legal, that's key. It has to be legally ongoing business before we change the law. But if it's legal, then they can continue to do what they've been doing irrespective of this, Joe.
Okay. So, you just stressed legal. What, you mean, they have a business license, that kind of legal? Or what are you trying to get to there?
I'm simply emphasizing that a lot of folks want to come in to not dispel them to other places and say, "I've got a grandfathered use because I've been doing this for 30 years." And when you flip through the records, you find out that low and behold, what they've been doing for 30 years has not been consistent with our codes either. And you can't give a grandfather if what you've been doing has not been lawful. That's the only reason.
Okay. I understand that. So, let's just say that there's some population of AG1 property uses that include landscaping businesses. So, what we're really talking about is controlling future businesses that want to operate, or businesses that have been operating for some time that are operating outside the bounds of our ordinances. Okay.
And we have about a dozen currently operating in AG1.
Legally?
That have business licenses. I counted business licenses.
But not a special use permit?
I'm sorry, sir?
That's right.
A business license, but not a use permit or special use permit.
Yes. I don't know how many of them have special use permits.
Well, none of them should, because herefore, there's no facility to get a special.
Well, I think that some of the businesses that exist legitimately sought a special use permit under Fulton County, and that's, and they are legally operated a business that was... that was intentionally based in horticulture. What's before us now, and I think the reason that we've heard from so many citizens that are concerned, is that going forward, the concern is that it's not, and that this whole debate had been, and the concerns from citizens that I think we're all hearing from, are that this goes beyond those that are nursery-based, and that instead, it starts to introduce language that would allow a commercial industrial-type business with heavy industrial equipment to operate on AG1 land, which was never the intent of what was previously in place. So to Councilmember Thurman's point, if it's truly horticulturally based with a nursery component, those are legitimately in place.
Yeah, you're right. Those are very different from operating a business with a lot of equipment that you're driving in and out of.
Correct. And I think that that's why the Planning Commission, and that's why we've heard from citizens, that when it's, when it looks, when it is heavy industrial-commercial, it's tough to try to claim that it's agricultural.
I have a, you know, question though. You know, where do you draw the line? You know, what happens when you got the kid in the neighborhood that's going to be entrepreneurial and gets his lawnmower out and cuts two or three of his neighbor's lawn? You know, I guess technically, he has to have a business license and special use permit.
No, it's a home-based business.
You know, I've got, I know other people, excuse me, I got other people that I know, I've got a friend now that's having to change careers and, you know, lives in Milton and has got a mower and a weed eater and put it in the back of his truck, and he's going to, you know, go out and do maintenance on people's yards or whatever it takes. So, you know, where do we, we draw the line? I kind of, you know, in fact, one of the, which I would agree with, number one, that the Planning Commission, you know, said is make some, some changes, but, you know, we always have the control of when something's brought before us with conditions and things like that. So I'm just kind of wondering where, you know, I guess it's all or nothing, isn't it? With, you know, if we don't allow them in AG1. Okay, Joe?
Yeah, well, I was going to say, how do we reconcile the differences between what a, I'll use air quotes, a landscaping business does versus what a residential property owner does? I mean, you could be, you could have two AG1 pieces of property sitting side by side. One is a landscaping business, one is a residence. And the residence can have multiple cars on his property, as many as he owns. The landscaping business, all of a sudden, is going to have some kind of criteria to control how many he can have. The residence property is going to be able to build a, if he's got a big enough property, build a barn and store all kinds of stuff in it, but the landscaper, all of a sudden, is going to need special permission in order to do that. It seems like we're building up some inconsistencies in the use of this property just because of what's actually going on. Now, maybe the bottom of that is whether or not the owner of the business actually resides on the property, because I see that as a little bit different than just property being used for a purpose where there is no owner that resides there. So, so maybe that's some kind of an out for us, but it's going to be difficult to give this guy the right to do one thing and the same, you know, basic use is denied somebody else because they're a business.
I know we've been looking at this for a long time, probably longer than we should have, but it seems to me, now that I sit here and look at it, that we need to concentrate on RZ 1008 first and figure out what our definition of landscape business is, and then we'll look at regulating them versus looking at this thing first. I mean, because it seems like a lot of these questions is coming, you know, that are coming forth are, you know, what exactly is a landscape business? So that might help us a little bit, whether we use this definition or a modified version or whatever, but maybe look at the definition first and then start regulating what we make out of that definition. I don't know.
Bill?
Is this...
It's our choice.
Is this the way the ordinance is written now?
No. I think yours has the same color as mine, the sheet with the red.
Right.
Scratch marks. It's, it's, those are the edits provided. In fact, the landscaping business definition has been totally adroit.
Both of them. We've previously given you the original sets at the last work session, so if you'd like to see that, I could run and get some copies.
I would like to see what it originally says now.
Yes.
Okay.
I guess the question is, this addresses, in paragraph two of this one here, it says allowing such use by permit, first five words. Is that the way the original is written?
No, this was all rewritten by the Planning Commission from the original, and I'll pull the zoning ordinance.
I think, yeah, I'd like to see the...
So these red lines on this one are the attorneys?
Red lines.
On your offices?
The revisions on the...
Not the original.
No, the original.
No, I think we need to see the original.
Okay, is Robin, is she going to get the original?
Yes, sir.
I apologize, it's been a couple days since I've read the landscape business. I missed it, and we were away this weekend.
Mayor, if I may, just while Lynn is looking that up, I believe that two, two questions that were posed are easily answered, and one is, to the mayor's point, what, how would this be different from a young man who wants to go out? It's a huge difference, and that is that today, they're not bringing employees to their land, they're not bringing commercial equipment. I mean, in terms of, if this, if, if you required an industrial-commercial business to be on C1, it, that doesn't mean that the son, a person couldn't go out and mow the lawn. They're not, that's a home-based business. It's not bringing employees to the site, and based on our zoning code, that distinction is specifically outlined by the law. The other is that the question that was raised about the difference with what could be on AG1 versus what was previously, was that you had to have a special use permit that met very specific development standards, and then it was not by right, it still had to be approved as a special use permit. The difference here, and again, I think that what we've been hearing at different meetings, obviously from citizens and those that email us, are concerned that it's, it wouldn't preclude what was the question that the mayor posed. The concern is that it instead opens the door for Pandora's box, and that you could have true larger commercial-industrial businesses that are not the boy of doing something, that it's bringing higher-volume employees, trucks, and things to the site. And right now, as written, this doesn't do anything to preclude the number of commercial vehicles. It just restricts potentially the number of employee vehicles, but that's a big distinction. It doesn't prevent somebody from doing work on the residence. Right now, again, it's the residence. It's not a place of business where people are coming on-site, leaving their equipment, and then going, and they're not storing traditional industrial-commercial vehicles. And so those are the concerns I'm hearing from citizens that are concerned with where this would go.
Do we have a clear definition of what an industrial vehicle is versus a commercial vehicle versus a vehicle? Because I keep hearing this word industrial, commercial, and I'm starting, I wonder what exactly that thing is.
Well, to go back to Councilmember Bailey's point, my question is, you know, and I certainly understand concerns with big industrial business, but from what I'm hearing, just, there's not a line drawn there yet. It's, you know, like you said, if you go out and mow your neighbor's lawn and get $10, you're basically operating, if you wanted to be legal and got a business license, you're operating a landscape business.
Could I just ask, as a matter of, as a point of order, is that true? It's not. I mean, our zoning, that if, if I want to, what if I want to go and mow George Ragsdale's lawn as an individual? Do I need, and I'm not bringing employee, but, you know, my son or somebody says, "I want to go and just mow a neighbor's yard." Is a landscaping special use permit required for somebody that lives on a residence to mow their neighbor's yard?
If they're being paid for it.
Yeah, and then again, I don't mean going to mow your neighbors, but I'm saying, you know, if you're an individual, and Lynn and I talked about this earlier, it's one of the pitfalls, is if you're an individual and you want to go out and mow four or five yards or whatever, you're a young kid, and you want to make some money, if you're going to be legal to say...
It also depends upon whether we want, you know, how strictly we want to enforce our code. If you get into weeds on some, of any jurisdiction's ordinance, begin to strictly apply them the way you could, not only will you be featured in the AJC as the folks who arrested the child, but yeah, they could, they could potentially involve that. I mean, you all are grappling with the issue that you grapple with whenever you change the code, and that is, it's almost impossible for any government to draft an ordinance that captures every situation that all of us can conjure up in our head, and it is terribly frustrating.
And I guess, well, let me add, okay.
I do want to come back to my question. Thank you.
The only exclusions for home occupations are specifically listed here: auto repair, restaurants, keeping of animals, funeral homes, retailer wholesale shops, motel-type establishments, taxi services, or any other occupation found incompatible with the intent of this zoning ordinance. So that's really pretty general. That last one really throws it into the weeds. So yeah, it very well could be a home-based occupation, as long as there was no, you know, no offense being caused to a neighbor. If someone were to start complaining, we'd start to wonder whether or not it meets that intent.
And Mayor, I guess that's where I'm kind of struggling is, where do you protect our residents from undesirable things happening next to them? And where's the line between that and a heavy-handed big government that's regulating everything you do? And that's where I kind of struggle is, you know, because clearly you want to protect them, because, you know, it'd be nice if everybody played nice in the sandbox and you didn't have to have all these laws, but we know that that really doesn't happen, so you have to have laws to protect residents from undesirable things, but at the same time, you know, you don't want to be too heavy-handed.
And that's, you know, that's my point. That's where I'm coming from, and I might want to ask staff not to put them on the spot, but if you took Planning Commission's alternate number one, you know, would that be kind of a way to manage what Councilmember Thurman's saying?
Allowing them in AG1 with the standards included?
Yes.
Twelve standards.
Yes.
That's what you're looking at. Originally, there were six standards. This includes 12. So we're, you know, really refining that allowance much more narrowly. Will there still be loopholes potentially?
And, you know, I know the council's grappling with this. Let me just, to the Councilmember Thurman's point, how do you balance the two? You know, the language in here is trying to do that. I could just quickly look at three situations where the language is trying to dance on the head of the pen. For instance, the preamble that says it is understood that some sites will simply not be suited for this use at all, that's one. Going down to the body, it says the size of the buildings, the size of the entirety of the buildings may be reduced based on compatibility with surrounding uses. Another, again, sort of an amorphous reach out to the notion that we don't want to unnecessarily impact adjacent property owners. And then finally, you get on the second page, edited number three, the proposed use shall not create noise, odors, or light spillage that is considered a nuisance. So is it perfect? No. I mean, you know, the human language is only able to account for so many contingencies, but that's sort of where they're trying to reach out and say, "We understand that this is not a one-size-fits-all proposition."
Okay. And I'm just going to make that point, and Bill, you can, you know, I would, I would agree with that solution there. Bill?
Help me to understand this. We talked about special use permit before, and my, to understand that a special use permit was not required before landscaping business in AG1?
No, there's always been a use permit requi, well, I say always, as far as Milton is concerned, there's always been one. And it's in section 64, 1820. I mean, you've got a copy of that there. Those are the standards that are required. It has to go before the council before it's approved.
And those previous, under Fulton County, I'm sorry, were required?
So, under application for any special use permit, whether it's landscape business or dog pound or anything else, we always have the right or permission to set any type of conditions for that use permit. And they can be based on any of these conditions that the planning set to us.
They can be broader than that. They can be any condition deemed necessary by the council to ameliorate the effect of the permit you're about to issue.
Right.
I do have one other question. We say in here, buildings not exceed 2,000 square feet. It seems to me that what typically happens is there's already a building on site, usually it's an old house that's turned into this office or storage or whatever, and most of the buildings in Milton are greater than 10, 2,000 square feet that would be turned into it. What happens in that situation? Does it let the other half of the building decay or...
No, again, this is really written for something that would be a new...
Well, it needs to stay that then, because like I said, most of the buildings are going to be greater than 2,000 square feet, and most of the time, these aren't necessarily new buildings. Most of the time, these, these operations are going into existing old houses or something that they're utilizing.
Or a house or a barn or something.
A barn or something, yeah. I mean, it's...
Hi, Joe?
Yeah, and shouldn't the, as long as we're talking about that piece, I mean, it's one thing to have 2,000-square-foot building on a one-acre lot that's zoned AG1, it's another thing to have it on a, you know, 25-acre lot. So, I mean, doesn't the ratio between the lot size and the building come into play? I mean, it's, I mean, I can imagine some people could build a real nice structure that, you know, larger than 2,000 square feet, that would be, you know, complimentary to the neighborhood as opposed to, you know, detrimental, which I think is what they're trying to protect against.
And if I'm right, Mayor?
Unless, Lynn, go ahead, Lynn.
We didn't include the ratio of size to amount of building. You could do it that way. They chose to go...
And I'm not trying to make this whole thing more complicated, I'm just saying it's, you know, it's tough.
I've seen active working farms in other jurisdictions where I've worked, wherein the farm equipment itself is housed on, housed and used regularly with many more workers than I've seen in some of these landscaping places. And, you know, it's perfectly appropriate, and it doesn't seem, it bothers folks maybe a few times a year, but for the most part, you know, we've got some sod farmers out there who are out there doing their thing all summer long. But that's typically on a much larger piece of property, you know. We could use it as a ratio, a percentage of the, but it's going to be very hard, the issue is that that makes it more difficult for code enforcement. I mean, you know, then you've got to prove how much property they actually own and how much they're really using for this landscape business, outside of, you know, their kind of gravelly semi-parking area and a whole barn and...
Yeah, the more you dig into it, the more complex it can be. Julie, you have a question?
Yeah, I was just going to say that effectively, what citizens that I'm hearing from are saying is that they want to regulate against misuse, and unfortunately, there's a lot of misuse. And it's not the, the young person that's out mowing a few yards, it's the fact that as soon as you allow for larger buildings, more space, fewer regulations, you effectively bring more commercial, and it's terms that people that are using, citizens that live here that were just in this room, that say that what they don't want to do is open the door for more commercial and industrial-like businesses, not, and to your point, Councilmember Longoria, not the person that lives there that's farming, because that's a community use that's commensurate with what we just had a whole development meeting about with Lou. But instead, it's the business that wants to buy the acreage and have a pipes nursery that's not a nursery, but's there on Roswell Road, it's their location for rocks and materials. It's the building that is Green Brothers on Highway 9. And those are the examples that I'm hearing from people that say, if it's passed without more specificity, specificity, that we run the risk that less expensive land will be utilized for an unintended commercial use. I think that's where the difficulty is with not having either C1 requirement or more standards that really help to mitigate the risk of the misuse. There's been some historically where a special use permit was pursued on Batesville Road, larger piece of property, and they effectively wanted to be the next location for Green Brothers. People have a legitimate concern, I think, and I think that our responsibility is not to think just about, well, how about those folks that aren't the, the problem? But it's instead, what would this do? What would be the unintended consequence where you could have on virtually every road other than a gravel road? A business that's coming not necessarily for an existing home, but that's coming in to buy cheaper land to operate what in Roswell, Alpharetta, Cherokee, Forsyth, and many other jurisdictions require C1, because it's not the person that's going to do it well that we're concerned about, it's the citizens that are saying, "I want to come in where I can get land that's less expensive." expensive. And I want to come in, I'm not going to live there, I'm going to bring in a bunch of equipment, and I'm going to come and go. I'm going to bring a lot more employees to the site. And this doesn't do anything about limiting the amount of commercial activity or the amount of commercial structure. This doesn't say anything about tractor trailers. So somebody could come in, they could use AG1, and there's no limitations to that.
But there really is, because they'd have to come before the council to get a permit anyway, and we could put all those restrictions on them at the time they come to the council.
You know what? Let me, yeah, let me interject into, again, as I said a minute ago, the option number one, Planning Commission came up with, and between that and staff and attorney, we tightened up the code. It also gives us some flexibility and, you know, because that is the problem. I certainly understand where all the councils coming from. You know, we don't want a big, huge industrial site and business there, but, you know, where do we draw the line with somebody that's just doing small stuff? So I think what, and help me with staff with the direction, you guys need a kind of a direction of where the council think they want to go on this? You know, A, leave it alone, B, eliminate landscape businesses totally from AG1, or C, the kind of hybrid in between with Planning Commission is one of their recommendations. Is that what you're looking for?
Well, you're going to hear this, what is it, the, oh, we haven't scheduled this for hearing, but we'd have to schedule this for hearing. So, yeah, I mean.
But do we even need, do we need to give you guys any direction now, or do we just need to be prepared to discuss it?
I guess, yeah, what are you looking for from us? Something you're looking forward to us?
At this point, we brought this back at a work session because you all had asked us to bring it back since we can have this kind of discussion. We can take it as it is with the Planning Commission's recommendation back to you all at the public hearing, which we'll have to advertise probably will make end of April, no, probably won't make end of April, probably the May zoning meeting at this point to come back to you for an actual vote. But if you've got some other direction that you need us to go in, other than these options that you've been presented, I probably need to know that now.
You know, I'll be the first to say, you know, that option that I mentioned, I'm comfortable with if we, you know, somewhat towards that direction. Bill just left that he was. I don't, you know, the rest of the council want to give any input to.
And what are you saying, Joe? This one here that?
Yeah, the alternate number, the first one that the council, that the commission, the Planning Commission.
Which is this?
Approved.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The one that we've got that's, that's minus the city attorney's edits.
And I have a question, because it was my understanding that the Planning Commission came forward with two recommendations.
They gave us two options.
I'll wait.
Yeah, they gave us two. But anyways, as I was going, is that?
No, I'm not done. I mean, there were four conversations. I was just waiting.
I'm not done either. When I'm done, you're welcome to speak.
I did, I did.
Karen, did you have a direction that you're thinking?
I mean, personally, I don't mind some of these. I do have a problem with the 2,000 square feet and that's, I don't mind 2,000 square feet for new structures. I don't think it should be 2,000 square feet if they're redoing an existing structure and making it better than it is.
Are you okay with the 5,000 overall?
Well, unless it's a 5,000, and it could be a 5,000 square foot barn they're going into and making look a whole lot better than it was looking before. So I just have a problem with the definitive numbers in here. I'd rather those be left, you know, either just be used up or left up to us at the time things come before us, because we're getting to be so heavy handed here. And, you know, it takes away any flexibility you have making something that really fits in with the, in the area, just because it does fit into a box. We're trying to put everything in boxes.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, I have a lot of respect for the work that the Planning Commission does, so I wouldn't want to sit here and pick apart anything that they did, because they work hard on this. I was mostly concerned about existing businesses, what would happen to them? Because I would hate to think about waking up and all of a sudden your livelihood is somehow restricted. And that seems to have been addressed. And then I would just want to see some kind of a process that someone who, you know, maybe has a different idea of what a landscaping business is and can operate it in a fashion that is, you know, fits into the area where his land is, I'd like to see a process that would allow him to come before us and get the permit or get the special use, you know, get subtle changes to that as we, as he petitioned us and as we saw fit. But I would be in favor of looking at exactly what the Planning Commission has drawn up other than that.
I'm in favor of the option one. The only thing I might like to look into is number seven, hours of operation. Maybe tighten that up just a hair on the closing side, but, you know, I mean, that's not a deal breaker for me.
Julie, you can go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would agree that from a timing perspective, nine o'clock, for a lot of citizens we hear from would be way too late to have dumpsters being dumped and commercial vehicles showing up on properties where they never intended to be living next door to a commercial business. I'd like to clarify, and the question I was asking earlier, that somehow we digressed into about five different conversations, a couple of questions I had had was, one, I want to clarify that what would come before us would still be the two recommendations from the Planning Commission. And as I understand it, there were two distinct, I mean, we keep referring to number one, but I think I heard our community development director say that there were two recommendations. One was either this, or the other option is to convert to C1.
And I mentioned that.
I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, the recommendations.
I mean, I too support the work of the Planning Commission. Obviously, they're part of this process. And our Planning Commission said that one option is to consider that C1 requirement because of the concern and misuse that unfortunately has the opportunity to exist when you have some, some land that's available in Milton. I would be, I would be remiss if I didn't continue to support what we hear from citizens, which is they're concerned about this. So I would suggest that we, one, need to bring both of those options forward from the Planning Commission, because those were the recommendations.
And those of the C1 failed.
You know, what she said, the commission give, recommend one of the two options there.
Could you re, be.
No, they recommended either or.
Either or.
Okay, the most of the cases here it says. They basically recommended.
I'm sorry, yes.
It is confusing with the ministry, but I think it was on that is correct. They all recommendations either or.
They made two recommendations.
One we can.
And so I think it's important that if indeed we all, as we say we do, appreciate the work of the Planning Commission, that we bring forward what the Planning Commission brought forward, and those are those two options. What I would ask, it sounds like everybody had some different things, and I do, regardless of whether or not I further support C1 or a modified version of this, I believe that some of the areas that still are at risk, and I support Councilmember Hewitt's point about timing, but the other thing that we still don't address is the number of commercial vehicles. And so I think that that is, it's something that I would look to our staff to look at, because if we have, it's one thing to say that we'll have some flexibility, it's another to say, what do we generally think is reasonable? And to have no requirement with regards to how many commercial vehicles in the middle of residential land, I think, I think that we're, we're setting ourselves up for some very unintended consequences, knowing some of the requests that were made historically on Batesville, on Fremontville, and on other locations where it could get really big and very intense very quickly. And yes, we always have that opportunity to add, but we still have zoning laws that generally speaking, put frameworks around things. And I would just ask that we bring both forward and that within the framework of the one option, that we at least look to mitigate some of the risks that Councilmember Luss brought forward the last time. He had a lot of concerns and risks that he noted, and they were valid, and we've heard from citizens. So I would ask that we do look at some of those additional options from staff. And I also am a little perplexed that we don't have a recommendation from staff. I thought staff was coming forward with a recommendation.
We recommended to the Planning Commission, and they took an action, made recommendation to you all. The recommendation we made to the Planning Commission still stands, it's a staff recommendation. However, I will say that it was based on the Planning Commission's request for us to go out and find some alternatives and find some.
And so what was your original recommendation?
Our recommendation was for the first option, which is the recommended edits. Obviously, I think it was the previous version of this recommended edits, because this has been back and forth three or four times.
And I guess, and I'm going to ask this question of you, because the last time we were together at a work session, there was a document that Lynn, you produced, that talked about businesses that are traditionally on C1 and those that are traditionally on C2. And I'm perplexed, because on that document that you guys gave us, it says that landscaping businesses are on C1, and yet we've had no mention of that. I just, to me, it's a little bit contradictory.
Sure.
And so I think that knowing that in another venue, there was that discussion, I would ask that staff, and again, you'll go back and you'll make potential suggestions to this, but knowing the concerns that have been posed by citizens, my request of you would be that we go back and say, okay, if we were to either pursue C1 or this, what additional detail would we offer up to mitigate concerns that may not yet be fully mitigated? Number of commercial vehicles, hours of operations, buffers? Because again, if you have, let's say that the business which under, falls under this definition could be just a, like a Green Brothers yard, where you have a bunch of materials stored, and I have a house and I live next door to it. What additional mechanisms are we suggesting here? Because right now, I don't read any. And so it's for those examples that I would hope staff would come forward and say, these would be the kinds of things that we would recommend. Because I don't, I just don't think that we've looked at those situations that citizens are concerned about. And I know we can always say, well, we always have the flexibility to add any condition.
You know, we're a little bit out of order with that, because to do that, and that's one of the things we struggle with, I guess, at this point, is where does, and the last place that staff wants to be is between the Planning Commission and the council. That's not a good place to be, unless we just absolutely are so passionate about something that we just can't see it any other way. You know, this, this is one of those things where as often as Lynn and I sit down about, and we sit and say, okay, you know, do we have enough, are we passionate about this enough to get between the council and the Planning Commission? And I don't, I don't know that we're there. Yeah, I think what we've got at this point is a recommendation from the Planning Commission that makes, that gives one of two options, and we're looking to the council for a policy decision on which one of those two options makes the most sense.
And the majority of council is on board with that.
In my, but again, in a work session, this is supposed to be that a work session, we can still.
Oh, it is. I'm going to tell you why we're not, why we're not jumping out there between the council and the Planning Commission.
And again, I would hope that we never perceive it, I, this would make very clear, that staff's professional opinion should never be perceived by any of us as getting between a Planning Commission and us. Lynn and our staff is hired to bring professional land planning and zoning expertise to this body. And so even in the, in the reverse, if we had a particular opinion, the Planning Commission had another, I would hope that our staff, and I believe that they are, that we're all professional enough to say, okay, we don't come from 10 or 15 or 20 years, a lot of us have been very involved in it, but we are not the hired community development director to make recommendations. I just, I'm a little concerned when I hear that, because I do want to make certain that we're always looking for the professional perspective of our staff. So I just say that, and I don't think a response is necessary, but I would, I would hope we don't.
I'd love to, if you'd let me.
I hope we don't back away from recommendations, because there's a concern that we're somehow going to put our staff in between. I would hope that we never go down that path, because I respect our staff. We may not always agree, and we may not always agree with something that the Planning Commission brings forward, but that should never preclude us from having professional dialogue about how to make and address citizen concerns that impact things as important as land planning.
Chris, you want to respond?
I do. And part of that is because, you know, I've sat down and asked our professional staff a direct question, Lynn, and I asked it this morning, again, Lynn, what is your professional recommendation? Because I know that question is coming tonight. I mean, I know what kind of questions we get in work sessions. And, you know, Lynn's response was, Chris, it really depends. And I said, well, gosh, that's enlightening.
Good answer, Lynn.
But, you know, she went down to explain that further, to say, you know, depending on the circumstances, there are a multitude of different ways that I would say, gosh, that I'm probably okay with, that probably makes sense from a planning perspective, that is getting close to making sense, but probably doesn't really make sense, and that, by God, that doesn't make sense. You know, but there was not a one size fits all answer to that question, which, you know, that's kind of where I wish we could sit here and say, yeah, we jumped behind option one, we think it's the best option, and we support it from a staff level because of this practice, this practice, this practice, and this practice. Or, you know, I gosh, I really wish we could get behind option two because of this practice, this practice, this practice, and this practice. And it just, I haven't been able to elicit and get that answer out of any of our professional staff, that it's that cut and dry. So, you know, I'll let Lynn take a little bit further than that, but it's not because there's been a lack of trying to get to a, gosh, we're definitive and this is what we think.
The only thing really I can add to that is that it is so application specific. I mean, it really is. There are opportunities for this not to have any offense at all to the neighbors. There are opportunities for this to be a pain every day. I mean, it just, and it's going to depend on that application, that business, how fast it grows. And the point at which it becomes a nuisance, I just, you can't, you can't define specifically. I, at least, like I say, in the, in a common sense approach, I don't, I don't see us being able to completely define exactly when that is. Now, we've made a good stab at it. These 12 standards are much better than the ones we had before. Would it be better to do it? It would be easier, I'll say this, it would be easier from a code enforcement perspective to say, that's it, they're all in C1. None in agricultural whatsoever. Just makes it easier on us. It doesn't necessarily make it right. I don't know that that's the right way to do it. I don't know that that's the wrong way to do it. Like I say, the only advantage I can see for, for that, from my perspective, is code enforcement. I've seen a lot of, again, a lot of these uses in AG1 that don't seem to cause a problem. And then there are those that are well outside of that 5 to 95 percentile that do.
Going forward, how do we do this? I mean, we can't go forward with, you know, an agenda item that says we're going to vote for either C1 or, remove it totally for C1 or the other.
I couldn't agree more. I mean, the point of the work session is to give guidance on going forward. Now, it would be possible to put two agenda items on. One, of course, would be to advertise for this modification of the code, and one would be to strike the landscape from AG1 altogether, landscape business. It seemed like a waste of paper to me, though.
Have two different conflicting motions where you had, because what happens if we approve both, though? Makes it be really.
You can't do that. You can't do that. The way, the way you handle the first one would dictate whether you withdraw the second. That's how you do it.
You know, before we get into, go that far, and we talk about them like they're third party, but we did have our Planning Commission here. And our chairman, do you have anything you want to add with the process, George, that you guys went through and with staff? I must be reading your mind.
Yeah, it's frustrating to sit there. It seems to me we're missing a couple of points. I mean, Karen referred to not wanting to put things into a box. I think the way we tried to do this is to avoid just that. One of the reasons that we offered C1 as an alternative, quite honestly, was if you guys wanted to abdicate completely, then that's the way you would go and say, it's not going to be in AG1 anymore. The way this was written was to try and give you guys the discretion on any application that comes before you to be able to decide what makes sense for that application. Like Lynn said, you know, we've seen a number of these, and they're not all the same. They're all in different locations, they're all different sizes. To Karen's point about the 2,000 square feet, you know, we had one that was 6,000 square feet that absolutely was a horrible use, because it didn't fit on the site. The reason the 2,000 square feet was there is to pick something, because AG1 starts at one acre. And at a one acre parcel, we thought the 2,000 square feet was about as much as it could, could be on that size lot. You get to a 40 acre lot, 2,000 square feet doesn't make sense anymore. You know, quite honestly, part of the reason we looked at the landscape definition and wanted to change it is because we currently have businesses that are operating what we believe are landscape businesses, but they're operating without a license, because they, they don't qualify as a landscape business under the current definition. So I'm on gravel roads. They don't belong there. They're not coming before the Planning Commission, they're not coming before you guys, because they don't fit the definition of landscape business. One of the reasons we wanted to change that definition is to try and make sure that at least we had an all encompassing blanket out there that said, anybody that's doing that kind of business needs to get a permit to do that. And ultimately, I think, you know, we tried to include language in there, as Ken pointed out, to give you guys the discretion for a particular application to say, is this too big for the location? Is it too noisy? Are there too many commercial vehicles? We felt like having the requirement that all those vehicles be screened or enclosed is going to define, in some cases, how big and how many they're going to be. But you guys can impose those conditions on a particular location and impose any condition But you guys can impose those conditions on a particular location and impose any conditions you want. If people want more than 2,000 square feet, you can give them more than 2,000 square feet if it fits that application. If it's the guy mowing the lawn and doing a business out of his house, you can include that, too. Let him get a business license, let him get a permit. It doesn't say you can't do that. We're not taking away the fact that a use permit is required. It's not given by right. Nobody's going to get one automatically. They're all going to have to be reviewed on the merits.
I do have one question. Now, if somebody came in and had a 2,500 square foot, they'd actually have to go for a variance, though, correct? We could not give them that, can we give them, we'd have to do a concurrent variance at the same time as the use permit, is that how it would be handled?
That's right. This language says shall, but that's correct, you can give it.
Thank you, George.
But it would have to be a concurrent variance that be done at the same time as a use permit?
Yes, ma'am.
And there are going to be things that come before us that, quite frankly, they may get close to qualifying for all these, but they just don't fit.
And that's, that's the point of, I think I used the phrase, some of the more amorphous language. I mean, that's why I think that was built in there, is to give you the flexibility to say, no. I mean, the public, the stakeholders on notice, this code says there are certain uses that simply are not going to fit this box.
And take me to that sentence again, it's in the second paragraph, correct?
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the second, I get what I tend to call the sort of the aspirational...
It is further understood.
It is further, sometimes will simply not be suited at all for such use.
That gives us ground to say, sorry, no.
Would there be a need, and would there be a need to further strengthen that so that you don't then have somebody that comes in and with staff's analysis says, oh, but there have been four others approved, and they were similar in size, and they were...
Now, you raise a good point, and the only point I'm saying is...
I'm glad I raised at least one good one. Sorry. Hey, everybody else can have a sense of humor.
I listen to them.
I'm being serious.
Councilor Robb, you're running tally now. Four's a good point tonight.
I can have a sense of humor, too, right? Everybody else can be sarcastic, but I'm not allowed to.
As the final arbiter of these decisions, though, yeah, your precedent will come back to haunt you. So, you know, the only, the only bad thing about having a lot of discretion is you've got a lot of discretion. And so you'll have it, and people will remind you of it.
Legally, I mean, their attorneys will remind us of it. So with that in mind, and so just so, because I'll forget, and I'm getting my senility maybe setting in, is that with that in mind, what else could you do so that the precedents that have been set don't mitigate the supposed help of the sentence?
I mean, if the council saw fit to want to buttress that, you could maybe perhaps add some language, sometimes a little bit like the variance language, that simply says that the circumstances that give rise to an individual permit are peculiar and based upon the characteristics of the property. You know, in other words, just to go ahead and put that in there, so every time you make a decision, you can always go back and say, staff applicant, you have to understand that the decision we've made was based upon the peculiar attributes of particular properties, surrounding uses, et cetera, et cetera, and that's why we made that. So don't come up and say, granted, four of these last...
That's correct.
If we're, you know, if we're working towards that direction, is that something, can you draft something between you and Lynn and let us, go ahead, Lynn?
Actually, a variant of that language is in that same paragraph, saying that it is understood that the proposals for a landscape business will vary in scope, and that based on the specific location and surrounding uses, individual properties will be suited for differing intensities of operation. I mean, it's kind of a softer way of saying it, but it's saying basically the same thing.
But it's softer without the specificity.
You know, and again, we may be saying the same thing, but maybe could you put a little more bite in it?
I don't know if that matters.
That's okay.
That's okay. George has told me that for 20 years.
Well, it also says it in the second sentence, the last sentence of the first paragraph says it, too, that it's only determined compatible within the specific area identified within the application. So, I mean, it's, we're saying, hey, this is specific. We're not, we're trying to get rid of the precedence, but I mean, how many times have we used specific in this?
A lot.
Yeah.
But I...
And that says it's not a...
How is this use of our discretion any different from any other use of our discretion? I mean, we walk this tightrope all the time.
I agree, because it's a concern we're discussing right now.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
I don't have anything about precedent.
Because the, because if, in the instance when there's one that is not in keeping, and it's incompatible, and citizens said, but you told me this was going to protect us, and it doesn't go far enough, the person with that application that does go too far is going to say, but you know what, legally, you are not representing what you've done for all these five or six other people. And unless we have language that tells us and tells those applicants what it is that would make that distinction legally in a court of law, I believe it doesn't go far enough, if indeed the intent was to protect further against those policies. Precedent's a dangerous thing. We've learned from the best, right, Mr. George? You tell us many times in those trainees that legal precedent is something to be concerned about.
Mayor, I'd like to put, I'd like to offer up that we go forward with the recommendation with these, all these 12 different things here, with a little bit greater, stronger language in there to keep us from having precedence. And we only have one thing, we not have two ordinances on there that are in conflict with each other.
Well, and again, you know, we're not making any decisions tonight or whatever, just kind of throwing out a little...
We're having to make a decision what put on the agenda.
Yeah, right, throwing out a little direction there that we think, we think we're moving in that direction, but if staff could address some of these concerns and also with what we've just been talking about, tightening that up a little bit more to make it a little stronger.
What I would propose, if the council's agreeable to this, is that we will put on the agenda what planning commission has recommended, and then Lynn and I will fashion a little bit of additional language, and you all could add that, even.
We could add that, as much as...
And the agenda item already spelled out, RZ 1006? I mean, that's pretty simple. If we're going to amend it, whether you change it this way or that way, not, we're going to maybe do this, maybe do that, and then the planning commission's recommendation, just like in every other zoning thing, is going to be attached in the packet, A, B, do nothing, throw it out, Lynn to keep it, embrace it.
Yeah.
It's pretty, I mean, it's simple, I think.
So we can, we're not, tonight, we shouldn't be changing what the planning commission recommended. They made two recommendations, A or B. And so our agenda will have A or B. Hopefully, A would have some enhancements.
Or A, if someone brings a motion for A, and then we can make enhancements.
But at least the public knows that those were the two things from planning commission.
But if we're actually voting on a change of the, of an ordinance, then it need to specify exactly what that change is going to be, not A or B.
That's why I'm suggesting to you, and there'll be two different legal ads, depending upon what you're, what you're going to pursue.
Yeah, because it has to be, you know.
That's fine. I mean, again, how you vote on the first one will dictate what happens for the second one. I'm not terribly concerned about that.
Okay, so how do we, in general, need to, you know, how do we need to address it then?
I think we've got it.
Okay. I mean, I think, you know, we're all in some fashion, you know, on board, and we'll work together to tighten it up.
But if we're making changes, I agree that nine o'clock's too late, so.
And Mayor, if, I'm hoping that this wasn't lost, and so therefore I'll just say it again. If we could have staff look at, to your point, Lynn, if you think that sometimes it might apply, sometimes it wouldn't, if you and your good professional, solid opinion could look at this and say, are there some limitations to commercial vehicles? You know, or are there, in the majority of cases, I can't imagine that most residences want a tractor trailer next to them. I mean, it would be the rare instance when somebody says, I can't wait to have a couple of tractor trailers next to me. I'd rather see us err on the side of caution and let that be the exception or the variance when they convince this body or some future body that, oh, you know, we really need that tractor trailer, and it's not going to be an infringement. I think to have zero discussion about commercial vehicles that can be heavily industrial, and I could drive you to 20 different locations on Highway 9 and in Roswell and in every jurisdiction, and I can show you what that looks like, and I think you know. And I think those are the things that we try to protect against. And right now, it concerns me that there's no language, zero, that discusses that. And I think it's, I think if we're going to go that direction, I'd just ask for our staff to give that some consideration in this body.
That's good.
Because I don't think anybody on this board would want to live next to a tractor trailer.
No, we agree with that, too.
I mean...
Nobody suggested that we would want to live next to them.
I know.
So I'm a little, well, anyway.
I disagree with putting forward two things. I think that the whole purpose of a work session is to give staff some direction and not to put conflicting things on the agenda forward.
No, I think, I think staff has, I think we're clear in direction. Is that, Lynn, you okay with that?
Yeah.
And then you're taking down some of these other points to address?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. And I just want to thank the planning commission for their work, and I appreciate that. And thank Frank and Allison for being here and all your work, so it's all positive.
Goodness, we all care about where we live.
Yeah, so I gotta throw one little thing out. It dawned on me the other day, I remember, I think it was when Alpharetta Country Club was applying for their license, and they wanted to be called Alpharetta Country Club. We said, you know, how about Milton, you're in Milton? No, no, we want to be called Alpharetta, that's more prestigious. And I remember, you know, all the real estate stuff was listed as Alpharetta address. Well, now, all of a sudden, you look at it, and they're all quoting Milton, prestigious Milton, or it's a Milton address. So I think people are starting to really appreciate Milton.
Well, one last thing, real quick, there is that windshield tour that the continuance having, and I noticed no one in the council has responded yet. I know that they would really like to have some people come to that tomorrow at 12:30 if there's anyone that can get away and do it. So, you be there?
And I would love to, unfortunately, I can't do, but I would love to be there.
Yeah, I think, I mean, they've invited like 60 people, and there's only been about 10 that have, at most, that have said they're coming now, so.
Wow.
Yeah.
Cool.
According to the EBI.
Okay, I hate to say, but we got to go back to this one more time because I'm not clear, and I don't want to screw this up. We have to advertise one thing or two things, okay? We either advertise that we are going to make an amendment to the zoning code, and it be this option right here, okay? The other one would be an advertisement saying that we're removing landscape businesses from AG1. So they, what I, I guess what I need to know, and I need to get kind of a, at least a sense of where the majority is at this point, is do you want to advertise just this one, just the C1, or advertise them both and let one decision make a decision for the second?
I thought that's what we had agreed to, and I think that at least...
I don't agree with that. I think, I think that's, that fits the purpose of the...
Yeah, let's just go through real quick. And my personal opinion would be just to advertise the direction we talked about, which is the first...
This or C1?
Not C1.
Not so this.
But this.
Okay.
This is what the planning commission's one recommendation, one of the two.
This or C1? I don't have this as a C1, so hold up a hand.
The one with the paper, this planning commission's recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, the planning commission without the C1 caveat.
Okay.
And I would, I would support what the planning commission put forward, which is both, knowing that if one, if one went ahead, the other would go away. And just, because everybody knows, the reason I believe that's important is that's what the planning commission put forward, and I do believe that it indicates, for transparency purposes to our community, that those are two things that we had considered. And otherwise, it gives the impression that we've already voted. And I have a problem with that because I do, I think it's more than directional. I think, I think based on the recommendation that came from planning commission, it takes a work session and it turns it in a little bit more to a voting perspective, and that's, I'm just saying.
George, did you want to say something?
That recommendation was specifically for this work session, because that's the process that was laid out. You know, we didn't intend to vote for you to forward it.
Would, can you help us out? Would it be better for you to, the staff, to recraft?
No, 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 no. I'm fine with this. I mean, this was me saying to Chris, I just want to make sure I don't leave here and give Lynn or Chris the wrong instruction, and I'm getting the right instruction now. No, I think, and Georgia's comments are helpful. I think to Councilor Zora Bailey's point, if in fact you all get to the meeting and